We are starting the Provo Planning Commission meeting. Today is July thirteenth and we will start with a two thousand twenty-two, in case someone's looking at the archives one day and doesn't know. We will start with a Pledge of Allegiance by Melissa Kendall, led by Melissa Kendall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have six items on our agenda tonight. The ones with stars next to them are legislative, so we will just be making a recommendation to the city council for those. And we will start with a roll call. Relyne, we'll start with you. Just tell us your name and if you have any conflicts. You don't have to hold it. Okay, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
Robert Knutson, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start with item number one on our agenda. Item number one is a clarification of a decision that was made by the planning commission in our last meeting. It was item number one on the June twenty-second meeting agenda. Just for information purposes, planning commission review and classification of a sign per section fourteen point three eight point one one zero in the Provo City Code for an apartment building in the CMU zone located at nineteen oh two North Canyon Road. I know that we had a lot of details that were discussed when this motion was made and those could be verified by looking at the minutes, so I my understanding is our intention in making that motion the way it was, was that we were talking about section fourteen point three eight point zero eight five of the city code. The code section referenced is the North University Avenue River Bottoms Design Corridor and Specialty Support Commercial SSC Sign Standards in fourteen point zero three eight point zero eight five parentheses four parentheses wall signs. So my understanding is that that was the section of the ordinance that we were referring to. And then that in addition to the stipulations or the conditions that that were reported in that June twenty-second report of action. Do we have a motion to amend that, just to add that information as a clarifying bit of information, or does someone want to discuss it? Is that not what you saw? I just wanted to state it first so that you could hear what I heard. Is that what everyone else heard?
Yes, that's consistent with my recollection of meeting.
Robert? Melissa? Okay, so is there a motion to confirm that and then we'll add that to the report of action for this meeting?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Okay, Robert, Mr. Knutson. Make a stated in do we need to restate what I said, or is that okay just to say make some motion? Okay, can you restate what we're moving? Do you want me to help you with that?
We need to it's on here that we need to read.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what we
So what is highlighted on the screen in that first red box is the motion that you are just confirming.
Okay, okay, because you've added, you've added those details in there. Thank you. Okay, do you see what's on the box on the left side? That's basically what I just said.
That's section that's section fourteen point three eight point oh eight five. North University Avenue River Bottoms Design Corridor and Specialty Support Commercial sign standards be applied to the sign permit that the size of the sign be no larger than eight eighty-seven square feet. And number three, that the brightness of the sign does not exceed NITS, the street light.
Excellent. Okay, so we have a motion to confirm as Mr. Knutson has stated. Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kendall. All in favor, we'll start with myself. I.
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 I guess I should state that these other two commissioners are new, so they aren't voting tonight because they weren't here when the original decision was made.
Correct.
Okay, item one is completed. Is that what we did? Okay. All right, we're moving on to item two. Brad, actually, I'm going to read an item two and three together. We have general plan amendment and an ordinance text amendment and they go side by side. Is that okay to read them in together? Okay, item number two is legislative item. It's Brad McKay, is it Mackey or McKay? Mackey. Brad Mackey requests approval of a general plan map amendment to Appendix C six in relation to adjustments of development standards in the SDP five zone, Lakeview North neighborhood. And then item number three is also legislative. Brad Mackey requests approval of ordinance text amendments to chapter fourteen point four nine E of Provo City Code to adjust development standards in the SDP five zone and to amend the related development agreement. And I think Mr. Ardmore has both. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll first just cover quickly the the map amendment and then go deeper into the the text amendment, because that's where where most of the changes are. So the map amendment, this is the existing appendix in the general plan for that area of the city. Whether or not the text amendments are approved in item three, there still needs to be an update with this map. You can see the proposed layout as adopted in two thousand eight. There's been already some significant changes to to this layout, so it's it's out of date. The proposed replacement for that general plan map is on your screen now. You can see a different layout of the villages, the densities associated with those villages and revised street network. Couple of things that really changed this already, the addition of the Lakeview Parkway was a big difference in the original plan two thousand eight to today. And the addition of the high school and future elementary school site have also been been changes to this. In addition to that, the the commercial, one of the main changes is the commercial village. If you look in the old two thousand eight version, the pink boxes on the top right were where the commercial was kind of imagined conceptually to be because of mostly because of the Lakeview Parkway. That has been pushed over against that higher trafficked road and kind of the densities pushed around that.
Aaron, can I ask you to orient us between those two maps?
Yes.
One of them seems to cover more ground than the other one.
Yes, so so what you're not seeing on this one is the the Lakeview Parkway that swoops over through here now. So if we go back to that one, you see the Lakeview Parkway swooping towards the west and there's additional land on the west side of that, which wasn't, which wasn't imagined in this version in two thousand eight. So there's Geneva on the east boundary. And then on this one, there's Geneva. Is that helpful? Okay. So those are the major changes with the map. A lot of the changes have to do with the related text amendment kind of reshuffling unit types and densities around to support the the future commercial and to make use of the changed road network. So if I could now, I'll I'll jump into the text amendments. I don't have a lot of slides for you on that. I have I do have a lot of slides because I have all the the pages of the text amendment. There's thirty-four pages. So I can go to any page or line number that you desire, but maybe let me maybe just give a quick overview of of what's being proposed and why. The the main point of this, as as Brad has worked through this, Brad is with Ivory Land Development. And the the biggest goal here is to to really overhaul the zone, to update it, to not only update it to change the conditions in the area, but to change conditions in the market and also to provide more flexibility with this multi-year development plan. As you can imagine, market changes over the years that they start building and different unit types, different different things are desired as time goes on. So I hope that everybody had a chance to read the the staff report. There's kind of a lot of content in there, but maybe I will just go through and and highlight the areas of concern that staff had. Overall, we think this is a positive move. We think that the general idea of this update is is a positive thing for the area and for the city. But but let me just highlight some concerns and that we think should be addressed before it gets adopted. The permitted use tables starting here on the residential districts on on the right side of your screen and and moving through the next several pages, and then again for the commercial and non-residential districts. There are some some issues that we have with those, whether it's the organization of them, some blanks in them, and even some of the proposed permitted uses within those districts. Staff would would just kind of direct you to kind of take a hard look at those and and see what changes would be would be wise there. The other another condition or concern that we have is with the bulk and intensity table. Now, this bulk and intensity table has kind of taken the place of your general setback, height, all those standards that are are typically in in different sections of code. And the idea here is putting them all into a table, which is a great idea. We like that idea. But working on the layout of that, the formatting of it, maybe an introduction to it, so it doesn't just start out as a table. And then making some of those numbers align with that that map that I showed you earlier, so that the densities are consistent between the map and the text. Further on in the proposal, there's a imagining of a reduction in parking. Staff is against any further reduction in parking. We feel like the the required parking for single-family homes and and the permitted uses in these areas has worked well in the city thus far, and we would support sticking with those that are referenced in fourteen point three seven of the Provo City Code. There's also a concern with the lot coverage allowances taking up I believe seventy-five percent for between forty and seventy-five percent. Might be too much in certain situations. So so we would just point you to that concern. Then there's some some minor things. There's a there's some language in there, proposed language about when the HOA would maintain the park strip. That is the the landscaping between the sidewalk on the street and when the adjacent property owner would. And we think some further clarification would be helpful there, so it doesn't get forgotten by one or the other. Dumpster enclosures is is proposed to be taken out of the zone. It's currently required to for the large dumpsters dumpsters to have enclosures that screen them. We would want that to stay in there. So those are a couple of more minor issues, but overall, the like I said, the idea is good. We support the idea. We think with some fixes on some of some of the standards and some of the formatting that this could move forward.
Are you done?
That's that's all I have.
Okay.
And open to questions.
Does anyone on the commission have questions for Mr. Ardmore?
Yeah, if you could set a little bit more light on let's see, so we're on page twenty-three of thirty-four, line four twelve or four ten. Permissible lot coverage. Can you give a little bit of rationale for that change from forty-seven percent to seventy-five that?
So that might be a better question for the applicant. That's one of the concerns that staff has is is moving from that forty percent, which is pretty typical in a lot of the R one residential zones. And they are now proposing seventy-five percent. And that is a concern that Steph has and the rationale could be provided by the applicant.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Any other commissioners have questions for Mr. Ardmore? Okay, is the applicant here? I know he's here because he told me how to say his name. State your name for the record, city of residence, I believe.
Utah. Glad to be here. This has been a long time coming. We've been working for probably close to two years to figure out exactly how we want to do this and and we realized that there were going to be some minor tweaks with this much information. And so actually to have that little of suggested changes, I'm feeling pretty comfortable with what we've presented so far, so we appreciate you taking the time to look at this, and I think it's going to be a good addition to the city and and to the community. With regards to the the percentage of lot coverage. So so the way this table is formatted to work is we have if you could go to it, actually, we could kind of explain that a little bit. So on the left, you have a low density, single family, medium density, clustered, single family, multifamily, etc. So we were building in some areas where we might have some lots that are smaller, like three, four thousand square foot lots with a clustered product on it. If you take forty-seven percent of the lot and it makes it so you're not really clustering the unit that much. That was the intention of the seventy-five percent. It's not going to be everywhere in the community. It's just in the cases where we're trying to cluster some density. So maybe there's some language that you know, the in the low density zone, it's the forty-seven percent and and then maybe there's a seventy-five percent in a different land use table like a clustered, single family or something like that. That but that was the intention was to try and create a clustered type neighborhood. For instance, we have a new three-story product that we think would be really cool towards the commercial district. It's a single-family, three-story product with rooftop decks that would be wonderful overlooking the lake and around the commercial. And those sit on a a smaller footprint lot and and we usually cluster some open space and have some amenities in the in the community and that that was the intention of that language in the document. Also, in the parking language, that was just a this document came from another city that we've had a lot of success in the community, so if we need to change the parking standards to your city standard parking, that's not a problem with us. It was just a initial proposal and and same with the rest of the suggestions that Aaron had on this document. Most of them were just carryovers from other communities that we've done the same thing in. And so it's not something that that really is a deal killer on on this presentation. So if we need to adjust to the city standard, we're we're more than happy to to work with you on that, so. With that said, really, that's that's the only changes that I wanted to clarify. Otherwise, everything Aaron said, we can work out between staff and and through, you know, a series of red line back and forth and make sure that we get this document clean before it's finalized. If there's any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any commissioners have questions for Mr. Mackey?
Yeah.
Mr. Knutson?
In the overview, it talks about one concern for the planning staff is the removal of an overall open space layout from the current map. Could you talk about that?
Yeah, if you can go to the map. The the intent of this map is just to be a a bubble map of land uses. And as you can see, it's kind of got a curvy line even around every bubble, meaning that it's not rigid. It's flexible a little bit. And really, the open space elements are going to be exactly the same as the original plan. If you go to the original plan that was approved, if you look at that, there's a lake right there that's on the Bunnell property that will eventually have a road going right through the middle of that that lake that connects up to sixteen, whatever north that is. And then the rest of that open space is actually under a power corridor and that will remain as a trail corridor. The intent wasn't to eliminate open space. It was just to provide a land use map for designating what can be built in each zone. So if that makes any sense, if we if if it's better to put that back on the land use map, that's again, not a big problem. If you go to our new map, you the elementary school on the north side of the elementary school is the power corridor along the north side to the left of that is also the power corridor. And to the east, north of Village Two, there's a power corridor. So really, that whole area right there will have a nice big trail corridor that connects Lakeview Parkway Trail over to Geneva Road and down through the community, just like the original plan had.
Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah, can you give us some examples of this seventy-five percent lot coverage where other communities in Salt Lake County or Utah County where you've had had that?
Sure. So the majority of this language comes from a project called Holbrook Farms in Lehigh. I don't know if any of you have seen that community. It's located just north of twenty-one hundred north and Redwood Road. It goes from the it actually goes from the Jordan River, past Redwood Road, all the way up to the Camp Williams property. We have the new primary children's hospital being built in the middle of the community. And we have some homes. We we've got a lot of variety of homes. We've we have got townhomes. We have condominiums. We have apartments, single family of all different sizes. And in that community, there are two different product types, a rear-loaded or an alley-loaded Scandinavian modern product that would exceed the forty-seven percent. I'm not sure if it gets to the seventy-five percent, but it definitely exceeds forty-seven percent. And then we have the three-story, what we call our e-villas that we're building right now. And then Oakwood Homes is actually building in that community as well, and they've built some products that exceed that forty-seven percent. And it's it's gone really well. So that's that's just one of the communities. We have one that we're developing in West Jordan that will have it. We have one in Eagle Mountain that will that will exceed that. Saratoga Springs, we have a community that will have that as well. So there's several different communities that will exceed that forty-seven percent. And it's only in the cluster type product. That's the only one that does that.
Yeah, I think one of the concern, I'm sorry, one of the concerns in we've used this this proposed general plan type bubble in in our own in our own work. So like as a planning commission body, we're we're not generally opposed to that style. However, for for me, for purposes of your proposal, it it is hard to make a jump from from one one map that clearly identifies those open spaces. There it's tangible to quantify that. And then with this one, there's it's not apparent at all.
Okay.
And it's and it's hard to hard to envision that.
Yeah, if you you know, depending on how things go, if you if you want to put that in your motion, that that open space be added to the map, that's fine. Like I said, the intent is not to change or take away in any way the open space. In fact, we've added open space. We're building a park in Village One right now. Actually, thirteen thirteen ninety, I think it's called. Uh, there's a roundabout with a detention base and we're actually adding a pickleball court and playground right now that wasn't on the original plan. There was no open space located in that area and we're adding a park right there with a pickleball court and and some shade and playground area. So things are going to change and evolve over time, and that's one of the one of the big reasons that I wanted to focus on land use as much as possible because um, the other thing we we've committed to the community, if we can never get our our sewer connections. Again, we we talked to them about building a community clubhouse and a swimming pool. And the location of that may change if this plan gets approved and bring it closer down towards the existing residents in Village One. And so the open space may change, just like the land uses may change it. The instead of having it right at the entry, we might bring it into the middle of the community, for instance. So I didn't want to have a document that was so rigid that we don't have any flexibility to adapt to the market and change with the market. That makes sense.
I agree with that um idea and but I think Mr. Gonzalez's concerns are the same as mine that um whether you have it painted beautifully on a map or not, if the ordinance allows you to reduce the amount of open space in the in the wording, then um there's a potential for a can of worms to be opened up. Am I understanding your concerns correctly? That there's a potential for this can of worms to be opened up because the words allow you to do something that the picture doesn't necessarily prohibit either.
So correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, on this. I don't think we had a required amount of open space in the original approval. It showed open space, but there isn't a requirement in the zoning text for a certain number.
That's correct. Yeah, it's all mostly based off the concept plan of the original Semedo. Uh, there isn't uh like you'd see in the the LDR MDR, there's a percentage, right? And that requires open space and many space. There isn't anything like that in the existing or the proposed.
So we're actually talking about two different things. Then we're talking about lot coverage and we're talking about open space and those are not the same requirement.
Right, lot lot coverage is within that single uh properties boundaries.
Yeah.
Uh, how much of that they can fill with a building?
Or is open space for the whole development, for the whole zone?
Open spaces is more shared common areas. Um, the the lot coverage is just your your open space for that private lot.
Okay.
Essentially.
Thank you. And I have, I just had a map epiphany. I think the reason I was confused about the two maps is because this new one shows an elementary school site that is not where the elementary school is. So we're talking about a new elementary school.
Correct.
So there were two. Okay, now I've got my bearings.
And this new map also shows the high school that is south of the community, which the original map didn't show the high school because I don't believe that was even contemplated when the original plan was done.
And could you tell us, um, is Village One all built out?
Uh, everything is built out except for the area directly to the west of the elementary school site.
Okay.
Um, but we know the unit count there. And so that's why in your table, if you look at that, there's a fixed number of ERUs because we know exactly what that is.
And how much of of the other villages have been built out? Any of them?
Village Two is about halfway done. And that's it. That's the only villages that are done.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Mackey? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have, oh, you know, I just thought of one because it helps with the next one. Was there a neighborhood meeting held for this?
I emailed Jared King, the the email that was provided to me and I never heard back from him on it. And we've like I said, we've held lots of meetings with the Broadview Shores Homeowners Association. So I maybe thought we didn't need anything, but I never heard back from him. So.
Okay, what about there's something in the staff report that I noticed um that there are property owners who own land within the zone?
Correct.
Um, what is their feedback about these proposed changes?
I haven't heard anything from them and they're not a party to the development agreement on this on this uh project. They haven't asked us to join and be a part of the development agreement. So as of right now, it's just us. We're the only ones that are a party to the development agreement for the SBD five.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ardmore, how does that work with other properties in the zone?
That I knew that question would come up. Right. So I I've been emailing with the city attorney uh because of the way the development agreement was set up. Um, any of those property owners that didn't originally sign or have sold to somebody else that didn't sign, they won't be bound by the development agreement, but would be bound by the zone constraints. Uh, they could still apply for a rezone and get a different zone applied to their property if they had a different idea what to do with it. Um, but they're not bound by the development, but are bound by the zone standards.
So they would be bound by?
By this this text in front of you tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. South?
Do we know what percentage of the uh of this development is owned by other other landowners?
Yeah, I can show you. I can show you which parcels are not owned by us. So this Village Three over here is owned by the Bunnel family. The Kurt Bunnel is somewhere right here and Wayne Bunnell's family is is where the existing farm is. They're the they're the sellers that we bought all of this ground from right here in this area. The Morgans own that uh horse boarding facility that are right here. And I know the city's been working with them to try and acquire some right of way for two thousand north. So they they are a party to this, but I don't think they are planning on selling. And then there are two or three different owners right here. The rest of it's owned by Ivory.
Thank you. How does that work when you rezone something over top of, you know, outside the bounds of the ownership of the property?
So the zone's already in place. So they they're already under the constraints of the SDP five. Um, these changes, um, they should be aware of them. They were all notified.
And they were on board when this zone was initially made?
I wasn't around in two thousand eight. I can't answer to that.
Is that an assumption we make that that they would they obviously knew about it? So?
I would assume that the council took that into account in their decision, whatever that feedback was.
All right.
That was before my time, so I don't know either.
Also mine. Thank you. All right, Mr. Mackey, you can sit down for a minute.
You so much.
We will ask for a neighborhood chair, who I imagine is not here. And are there any people from the public that would like to speak about item number two or number three? Okay. That was a very uneventful public hearing. Thank you. Yeah. We'll take it. Okay, I have a few questions. Um, as we the rest of this time, as we discuss items two and three, will be the commissioners discussing among ourselves what we would like to do about this, what the options are. And I just had a few questions for Mr. Ardmore. Um, how do you want us to discuss this? Do you want us to iron out all the details in in the concerns that you've raised? Or do you want to just give guidance and say, we like this, we don't like this? Because um I'm concerned about sending this on with so many modifications suggested. And concerns noted by the city. So I would be inclined to say, can we iron this out before we make a decision on it? But what do what was your envisioning of our input today?
I think it'd be appropriate if you have concerns um to list those out. And if those concerns are things that are going to take time for the staff to work with the applicant on, um, it might be necessary to continue it as the this would jump to the city council on the next hearing um with a recommendation either way of approve or deny. Uh, continuation would give us time to work out those issues before it got to the council.
Okay. Um, so I guess my question for my biggest concerns are these um the glaring ones like the parking reduction, the um lot coverage, the dumpsters. Who's going to maintain the landscaping? Like, I feel like those are things we really should understand before we change language. And then so my question is, how do we address the intent of what Mr. Mackey has said with the parking and the lot coverage to meet the intent of his of of him without opening a can of worms for, you know, if we if we take change lot coverage or parking and then he says, well, this is what we're going to do, but then someone else could do something different. So how do we address that? And maybe that's a question for the okay. Come on up.
My suggestion with parking is just in your motion or whatever, just say that we'll follow the city standards. And it was.
So basically strike that section?
Yeah, or or just say revised to meet city standard and dumpsters, I'm not a I I honestly didn't even know I took that out. So that that doesn't make any sense to not have a dumpster enclosure, especially with the multifamily community. So um those kind of things that you're bringing up, I can make that really easy because we could just say, leave those in. If that makes sense.
Um, that reminds me, I had one more question on page two of the staff report. Um, it says that the staff has concerns about gravel pits and rock crushers being on the conditional use list or the permitted use list. Is that just another thing that just inadvertently got added because you took the language from something else?
Yeah, that was left over from the other community.
Okay.
Um, we, it would be nice to be able to do that on a temporary basis. I think the concern from the city staff is a lot of times when that's left in the code, people make a permanent gravel pit operation. And so that's not our intent at all. But if there is material on site, it's it's an economical and green thing to do to utilize the materials that are on site. And so you know, running it through a crusher or something would actually be a a great thing for everyone on a temporary basis, but not a permanent basis. So I think if we put that as a temporary or a by conditional use or something.
If I could ask a question. On a site like this, where you're bringing in more field and cutting away, uh, is that still something that you'd imagine happening?
So for instance, we did foothill park in your city and we had a whole bunch of boulders. They're stacked right by Geneva Road right now. So somehow we need to crush those and get rid of them and utilize them. And so that's the only thing I can think of. Other than that, you're correct. We're bringing in fill from offsite.
So technically, you could remove the boulders to some other rock crushing establishment and?
Yeah. Skip Skip Dunn's our contractor that we use and he has a rock crushing operation on the north border of this project. So.
I know that costs, I guess it costs money either way, but that seems like an easier solution than amending the ordinance twice for that.
That would be great.
Okay.
What what is a temporary basis for for you? What would you envision as a temporary basis for rock crushing operations?
Well, I think it might happen for two or three months that you'd bring in a topsoil screening and um crusher. So you so you you'll put in the material and you'll get some gravel and you'll get some topsoil and some reject material and and usually it's there you know, for two or three months and then you're done.
Are there any um issues as far as seasonality goes? And in my head, I think about like the summer season and with uh basically permanent fires going on during the summer and air quality uh.
I I guess with winter too.
Inversions, um, what?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's easier just to take that out.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Ardmore. The staff report, page five, it says staff understands, this is when you're talking about line seven twenty six. Staff understands that the current standard for RV parking in the SDP five zone has created some issues and are comfortable with the language being removed. I'm curious what those issues are. Were they noncompliance? Were they complaints? Like what what issues would say, yeah, go ahead and park your RV wherever you want?
Sure. Yeah. So the the current code uh specifically written into SDB five, which you won't find really other parts of the city, is that if you have an RV on site, it has to be in a covered concealed parking spot. Um, that's difficult for a lot of starter homes. It's difficult for a lot of families to that want an RV for summer vacations to to have to build a larger than normal garage for it. Um, and I think they've they've kind of realized that at Ivory and um staff, because it's consistent with every other residential zone in the city, having them be open just on the side of the home or or what the the standard is, we wouldn't have a concern with removing that enclosure requirement.
So just moving it like, for example, behind the front line of the house, which is what I think the language is right now, right?
Right.
So it's not really that horrible of a change.
Correct.
Okay. All right, I've raised my questions and discussion prompts. So commissioners, let's talk. What sort of motion or um direction are you thinking we need to go with these two items?
Just a comment. I like I I'm not the the lot coverage. Um, it doesn't necessarily bother me going that high. Um, like I was recently in Daybreak and they have they got to have certain some properties that have at least seventy five, if not more higher lot coverage. In addition to that, they have tons of open space. Tons. Um, and uh I think when you um, and in my mind, when you have that kind of lot coverage, it's pretty, you know, it's pretty compact and dense. Um, it it works great if there's open space. Um, it it provides the entry point for a lot of people that to get into homes and and still still have amenities for a great family life. Um, which brings me to the next thing like uh with the bubble map um and and um not having the open space identified. And I and I recognize that that there isn't uh a percentage requirement in the prior zoning. And and then with this change, um there's just no standard for us to hold you to um for that. And so that's a um, I'm inclined to uh approve with the condition of an open space plan.
Okay. Anyone else?
Ms. Kendall?
I just wondered, there's just so many things, so many changes. Is it possible to get it all cleaned up and then approve it? I I'd like to just see it all cleaned up. And then it would be a lot easier, I think. Take out all the stuff that, oh, that just got thrown in there. So that was left from the last thing or, you know, clean it all out. Let's approve it then.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, I was just gonna say, I just feel confident that you'll continue working with um with Aaron and you can get it all worked out. I feel like you've shown your willingness to, you know, fix things and you know, clean it up. And your intent is not to get rid of open space. It sounds like you're trying to make it like with your pickleball court, you're trying to make it family friendly. So I kind of respect that relationship you have going right now.
Okay. I'm hearing that maybe we could quickly make a list of things we want to see specifics on. And whether we trust Mr. Ardmore to just make that happen, or whether we have to see it again, can be something we decide as we make that list, maybe? Okay. Um, I heard accounting for or some sort of guarantee on open space. Right? Um, striking the language that we realized was added and doesn't work. So so far I've heard the parking and the dumpster.
The temporary or the the rock, the gravel.
Gravel, the gravel. So that's three. Dumpster, parking and gravel. Those three concerns can be stricken if there were the changes are removed. What else have you guys heard as we've been asking questions? What about lot coverage? Mr. Gonzalez says he's not uncomfortable with it, and I'm not uncomfortable with the intent of that clustered daybreak feel. But um, how do we as commissioners feel about language for that? Mr. Ardmore has a really good idea simmering.
I have a suggestion for that. I don't know if it's a good one. Um, to to move that standard into the bulk and intensity table. Um, so then you could separate out, you know, where you have those man uses in Village, um you go to that page. Uh, like villages two, four and seven have that cluster, single family. So maybe you can you can separate your lot coverage through that table for the different villages. So then you could have seventy five percent in the ones that need it and then uh something closer to forty percent and in the more standard, single family villages. Uh, s- something along those lines, I think, would work. I think it would overall, I think. Uh, s- something along those lines, I think, would work. I think it would overall, I think it would work better in the bulk and intensity table than than a section of its own that applies to the whole zone.
Okay. I like that. How do you guys feel about that? Do you want to modify his suggestion or do you want him to write it down as he suggested? Write it down as suggested. We've got a whole bunch of nods. Go ahead.
Aaron, did did ER use the max unit ER use? Did that change from from one plan to another?
The terminology changed, um, but the sewer connections did not.
Remind us what ERU stands for?
Equivalent residential units. So that's something that the applicant has been working closely with public works on 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 making sure that we have the sewer capacity that uh was promised to them in the initial zone adoption.
Okay. Um, I just stumbled across another one atop of page five, line six sixty one to six sixty four. Um, it says to remove the option of having a second kitchen anywhere in the zone. I love that idea, but I've seen that happen before and it's impossible to enforce. So I was just wondering if you had a plan for you take it out of the words, but how how does how do we make sure that they don't all build kitchens and is that irrelevant?
They'd, the only way to do it is to not get a billing permit for it. So we review for those on all billing permits. We count the kitchens and put conditions in if there's a second kitchen. So.
Just out of curiosity, how many illegal basement or kitchens apply for building permits? You see where my concern is.
If if it's new construction, they have to have a building permit. And having done this myself, you you sign basically that.
And I've signed one for mine that I'm not going to rent it out, but I have seven adjacent to me that have not. So.
But those probably did not require building permits because they weren't new construction. So these these will all be new construction.
I guess I'm just a realist and I know that someone's going to buy one of those cute little cottages one day and they're going to be like, hey, there's three bedrooms. I can turn this other one into an apartment for my friend's cousin and before you know it. Anyway, I'm just going to say that because I understand that it's very difficult to enforce without making neighbors rat on each other. But let's hear what you have to say.
Um, just remember, we also have an HOA. So in order for them to get a renter, they have to actually apply with the HOA and the terms of the lease agreement and everything have to be disclosed.
It is easier for you to enforce it.
So it's a lot easier for us to enforce it through the HOA side than it is through the city side.
Thank you. I appreciate you reminding me of that. Great loophole there. Perfect. Not a loophole, a safeguard. Um, landscaping maintenance, we haven't talked about that was a concern raised by staff. Um, when the homeowner would maintain the park strip instead of the HOA, there's language in line six forty two to six forty three. Do we have any guidance for Mr. Ardmore on that? It's at the bottom of page four in the staff report. Up to the top of page five. Mr. Ardmore, do you have guidance for yourself that we could maybe recommend? You just said staff has concerns. So that led me to believe you don't actually know what to do about it.
Well, I think identifying when the HOA maintains it and when the adjacent property owner, just a little bit more language there can can clarify that some to make sure it doesn't get missed by both.
Okay, so let's add that to the list and have something to be specified in this language of that section. Um, commissioners, any other big glaring ones that jump out at you? Mr. South.
Maybe just on that same one, uh, you made mention of water wise landscaping. Do you have ideas for that? Or is that something to spend any time on, Mr. Ardmore?
We have allowances for that written into uh fifteen title fifteen, chapter twenty. Uh, there's a water wise section that that they could choose to use. Uh, we we encourage it, uh, but it's no in no way required at this point.
Okay. And then commissioners, last filtering question here. Um, Mr. Ardmore has recommended a lot of things that staff's concerned with, but just this is how he suggests. We're fine with it, but let's just do this together. Are we comfortable saying all the changes you should suggested that we haven't given him further advice on? We want him to go forward as suggested, or is there any other advice you want to give him on those? I asked, I I my father told me that you're not supposed to ask questions like that in the military. That was that was misleading because you just all gave me a head nod and I don't know which one it was. Ms. Wallen, you had a an idea.
I know. I'm saying I agree with that.
Okay. Mr. South, you okay with that?
Yes, the only question I have still is kind of going back to uh other property owners that aren't bound by the development agreement, but that are um, would be considered from the from these this zone change. Um, is there any provision or any consideration we should make in terms of looking at the the amount of impacted properties and and what that might do? Uh, it it just seemed like there was an awful lot, like most of or a big section, maybe most of village three is actually not owned by the developers, obviously a big section of village five. So I'm new to this, so I'm not sure. Just raising the question maybe.
I can I can try to address that. Um, in in these discussions that we've had in the previous months with the applicant uh, with villages three and five not being owned by his company. Uh, we we wanted to make sure that in that table that you see to the left of the map that those villages were still um approved, allowed the up to the the general rule for the west side of three units per gross acre. Um, so they still have the same property rights essentially that the other R one zones have um, out on the west side. But again, it's the zone is already there where we are making amendments, are proposing amendments. And they could always come back with proposed amendments of their own or proposed map amendment of their own if they have a different idea.
Where these amendments refer to an HOA for um enforcement of these things or oversight of these things and those properties wouldn't be under that HOA, how does that work with that language?
Brad, do you want to address the HOA questions?
I'm just worried about like the area in village three and village five that you guys don't own. How do those property owners comply with the zone rules if the zone rules are written with an HOA in mind?
So I don't know how that works with the zoning, but let's say they wanted to be a party to our development agreement, which gives them some guarantees and benefits, then we would also require them to be a part of our HOA. And that that's pretty, we're we're the declarant of the uh HOA. And we're also the developer of record for the development agreement. And so if they wanted to be a party to the development agreement, then we would require them to also be uh, a party to the CC NARS and the HOA, because then that way we can work with them on architectural standards and make sure that they're in compliance with all of our um, you know, guidelines for landscaping and architecture and rules and regulations um in the community if they if I guess they decide to develop just under the the flat zone. And you allow that to happen. I don't know how we could enforce anything on them. That's, that would be something that the city would have to contemplate in the future approval, I guess.
How does that work? With that language in there, if they choose not to be part of the development, how does that work with the zoning over top of their property?
So so we'd still have the zoning standards that apply to their properties. Uh, unless they change the zone, they still are bound by those zoning standards. If they're breaking any of the zoning standards of the SDP five, they'd be um sent to code enforcement, code enforcement would investigate and and enforce just like they would anywhere else in the city. Um, regardless of the HOA or not. Okay, HOA, CC NARS, that's all private.
So HOA, it doesn't matter that the language refers to it. If they don't have it, it's okay?
Right. The city doesn't get involved with with HOA standards. We just get involved with with zone standards. Bill's gonna add to this.
Yes. So the uh conditions, covenants and restrictions that the HOA enforces or maintains, that's just a separate level of control and and restrictions and benefits to the property in addition to the zoning. As long as we're happy with the requirements of the zoning and that's what they'll have to comply with, then we should be good. What would be our position as a staff is that we think if we can get the zone right, that would give us enough protections that we wouldn't be too worried about them being part of the HOA.
Okay.
We would love for them to come into that. We'd love for them to be part of this project. But if they choose not to, as long as we get the zoning right, we're we're happy with that level of safety.
Okay. I was just worried since HOA is actually stated in here as in the in the ordinance language that there was some sort of oversight that was implied that doesn't exist.
And can I clarify one more thing? That's one of the big reasons why the park strip language has been changed and will be changed again. In the original document, it said all park strips will be maintained by the HOA. Well, that that doesn't.
You have to do theirs for them.
That doesn't really work. If if the HOA is not maintaining someone's lot, then what the the lawn in the yard gets mowed on Tuesday and the lawn in the park strip gets mowed on Wednesday or Friday or Saturday or whatever. So the intent is any single family home that the homeowner maintains their own yard. They will also maintain the park strip. Any any lot that is or home that is maintained by the HOA, the HOA, HOA will also maintain the park strip.
So that intent, if that could be reflected in that clarification of that landscaping would be awesome. Um, the last thing I'm looking at my notes here, the bulk and intensity table. You suggested improving the layout and including a legend. And then you also suggested um moving the lot coverage standards to that, which we've already got on your list, but just in addition to the lot coverage standard is being moved to that, make sure the layout and the legend are in existence to make it more understandable.
Yeah, some of the for formatting issues and and things like that. Yes.
All right, commissioners. I think we made quick work of this very long document. Do we have um a suggestion on whether we want it to be? Do whether we want it brought to us um with um like continue it and have the changes brought back to us? Or would we like to defer and let Mr. Ardmore make those changes? I I think because we're making a recommendation for actual ordinance language, we probably should review it one more time. Maybe not in a twenty five page thing, but maybe a a table of here's the language we changed. But I think if if we all are kind of on that same page, I'd love to hear a motion. And a whole, you know what? We need to, before we have a motion on three, we should probably go in order. Item number two, are we all in agreement that this is just a change that needs to be made? Or do we need to um maybe add something on top of that to guarantee the open space like Mr. Gonzalez was talking about? Are we concerned that the other property owners haven't spoken up about it or is the map irrelevant in that case? I feel like it sort of separates them out anyway. Mr. Ardmore, do you have an opinion on how would be best, most helpful for us to proceed on item number two?
Based on what I've heard, um, I think it's it's kind of in the same boat as item three uh, where there is a a concern that we revise it to show the open space plan uh through the development. But otherwise, everybody, from what I've understood, seems seems okay with it.
You're right, that we like it well enough, but a map should reflect our concerns about open space. Okay. So uh, I'm going to give a little cue card here that says perhaps continuing both of these is what we all would like to see. So starting with item number two, do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Gonzalez, you're the winner.
Yeah, I I move to continue. Uh, item number two, Brad McKay requests approval of general plan map amendment to appendix appendix C six in relation to the adjustments of the development standards in the SDP five villages at celebration, specific development plan overlay zone.
Okay. Do I have a, the motion was to continue item number two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Knutson has seconded. All right. Well, I'll vote. I will um call everyone by name. Ms. Wallen. Aye or nay?
Aye.
Mr. South.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Knutson.
Aye.
Ms. Kendall.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So unanimous recommendation to continue. All right, item number three, we've given Mr. Ardmore a list of things we think need to be changed. Um, do we have a motion on what we would like to do with this item? Ms. Kendall.
Okay, I'll take a stab at it. I make a motion that we um continue item number three. Request approval of ordinance text amendments to chapter fourteen point four nine E Provo City Code to adjust development standards in the SDP five villages at celebration, specific developmental plan overlay zone and to amend the related developmental agreement. Um, and that we are uh hoping to see the changes that we've discussed and that the staff recommends.
Excellent. That motion was by Ms. Kendall. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a second to continue item number three. Ms. Rollin, we'll start with you on the vote.
Aye.
Mr. South.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Knutson.
Aye.
Ms. Kendall.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. So we have continued item number three um, to see those changes. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mackey, for being here. Did you go to Murray High School? That's why I knew how to pronounce your name. Mm hmm. I think you played basketball in nineteen eighty nine with my brother Evans. I'm Chris Evans's sister. I'm like, I know this name. Okay, scratch that from the record. There's no conflict. He didn't know who I was and I only knew his name. Okay. Um, we will move on to item number four. I'm going to read in item four and five together. Item four, we have the ability to approve tonight. It's a concept plan. Item five is a legislative item. So um, it's, we're only making a recommendation to the city council for that one tonight. Item four, Lindy Della requests concept plan approval for three industrial buildings and a proposed airport industrial lo- zone located at thirty seven oh one West Center Street. Um, and then item number five, Lindy Della requests a zone change from A one ten to airport industrial for approximately thirty three acres located at thirty seven oh one West Center Street in the Provo Bay neighborhood. We will start off with uh, Mr. Wright.
All right, thank you. Uh, the applicant is requesting this uh proposed concept plan and rezone at this property that we see here. It's out by the Provo City uh airport on Center Street, uh thirty seven hundred west. And it's two parcels that total approximately thirty two and a half acres of land. Um, it will be um bisected down the middle with a public street as well as uh streets uh down the east and west side of the property. Uh, the buildings located on the site would be approximately twelve acres of the thirty two acres. Staffs reviewed the concept plan that's been submitted here and compared it to the requirements in the zone that they're requesting the airport industrial zone. Uh, staff finds that it would be able to uh comply with the requirements of the airport industrial zone. Uh, it's it has warehouse and office uses being proposed in these structures. Those are both permitted uses in the proposed zone. As far as parking goes, they meet the parking, minimum parking requirements. They have uh shown that they'd place uh even more parking than the minimum requirements. Uh, they'd be able to comply with the building heights. Um, as a concept plan, that's what you're looking at today. In the future, if the rezone gets approved by the city council, uh, we would see a project plan um come back to planning commission uh for review and go to design review for their architecture. Uh, but here's kind of what they're proposing, uh some some renderings of what the project would look like and uh, so those will be reviewed in more detail at at a later stage in the final project plan review. Um, so staffs uh reviewed this. Uh, Public Works has had some uh issues. They've been able to kind of work through as far as uh future needs uh for street improvements. And um, that could all be handled under. And um, that could all be handled under a development agreement, which the applicant and the city have been uh working through. So that development agreement would be part of the the rezone that would be approved uh by the city council. So staff's placed uh or is recommending approval and placed uh two proposed conditions with that, and that would be for this concept plan that that development agreement is approved by the city council and recorded. And the city council approved the rezone to the proposed zone. Um, so those are the recommendations for the concept plan. And then I'll kind of jump over to uh, the rezone request. Um, so it's going from the agricultural A one ten zone to the airport industrial zones. This is a zone that uh was newly created last year specifically for areas around uh the airport. And so the zone would be the first one to to be placed out here after it was created last year. And so um, there's also a small parcel that the city owns on the corner of Center Street and uh thirty-seven hundred, I think that is, uh, just right up here on the corner. And so separate from the two parcels that the applicant has, uh, the staff report just also recommends that we include that small parcel into the rezone request as well so that it would all be consistent. Let's see, the proposed zone is um compatible with with the airport. Uh, and so we feel like that's a good use uh or good zone to place in this location that will help support the airport and the general plan. For this area. So here's the zoning map currently. Um, I'll show you this and then I'll jump to the general plans of the the zoning map. Uh, as you can see, the property is currently that A one ten and the surrounding properties are zoned. Uh, manufacturing, agricultural and public facilities. And so here's the general plan map uh that shows the airport compatible uh designation for this area. And so the zone that again was specifically written for these areas surrounding the airport uh would be in, would be in line with our general plan and support that uh goals and policies outlined in the general plan. And so staff supportive of the rezone request. That the planning commission make a positive recommendation to the city council to approve the rezone um, with that development agreement that would address the public works items and and so that's uh these items. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Any questions, commissioners, from Mr. Wright? Mr. Knutson.
I've got a couple of questions. Uh, what do they predict will be the number of trucks that will use this facility on a daily basis?
Um, yeah, we could have maybe that question either answered with uh Public Works here or maybe the applicant might be able to better uh answer those anticipated.
Another question on the roads. The way I look at it, there's only one designated road at this time, which would be on the west side. It says here on the east side that it's a proposed future roads. Is, so is there only one road into this facility? It's the same road that actually goes into the aviation park?
Yeah, currently on the west side, this this road's developed partially. Um, and then they would continue it further south uh to the southern edge of the property. And then there'd be a public road bisecting the the two parcels down the middle.
On the east side, will it be another route out?
On the east side.
But if if something, whether it was an accident on the west side at that corner, would it shut the whole facility down? The trucks could not get out. Other trucks that are in there could not get out or trucks could not get in.
Um, yeah, so you're talking about the intersection right there.
Yeah, does that go clear up to Center Street?
Yeah, there would be a connection right here. Um, we can ask David Day if this, how this intersection looks in the interim. I know this future road that you see here is on a property that's owned by a different property, so there'd be a stub, I believe, but maybe David could answer that a little bit better for us.
So, David Day with Public Works. Um, they would build this. The problem with right here is it's not owned by them. Uh, it's owned by somebody else, but the developer to the east is is willing to partner with them to build that. So we would have this connection here all the way to here and across here and up. So you'd have this loop, plus you have another entrance, right, about mid-block right there, so uh, their parking lot surrounds the whole thing, so if if this was blocked for some reason, they could, you know, go around and and get out in different locations.
Not a big truck though.
Was that all of your questions for me?
I have a question.
There was a question about volume of traffic. I don't know what their projection is for this, so you'd have to ask the applicant. We don't have that data yet.
Um, it, the summary of the key issues says that the remaining comments from Public Works related to adequate utilities and traffic demands um be addressed. These aren't given to us on the report. Does it matter what they are or do we just?
Yeah, so, so um, all of our concerns can be addressed in the development agreement. Some of the issues out here uh were alluded to by a previous developer, the uh Brad Mackey with Ivory with our sewer limitations. We're building out that infrastructure as fast as we have money to do it. And with inflation and escalating prices, some of our capital projects are pushing out into the future a little further than we thought they would. And so part of this development agreement is just making it perfectly clear that until that infrastructure is in place, then these buildings will not be able to be occupied until that that time. But we're feeling like uh we'll have things operational, you know. If they were to get this approved and start building in, you know, like a year from now, we would probably be okay. But uh, that development agreement will take care of all of that timing.
Do you know, are you the one who knows what that little parcel of land is on the northwest corner?
Uh, straight right away.
So that's not going to be sold or included? Clean up the zone map to show it?
Acquired to do uh some uh of the the street that's to the west, I think it's thirty-eight hundred west uh was built years ago to facilitate Duncan Aviation going in. And the the road is about eight feet higher than the surrounding land. And to make that slope down, we had to acquire some property to do that.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Day? Any other questions for Mr. Wright, commissioners? Okay.
Commissioner Wright, I mean, uh, Mr. Wright did this appeared before the planning commission before, right? Is that, I seem to recall this.
Correct, yeah. This this item for this property came before the planning commission a while back. It was a, it was two buildings instead of three, and so it was a different uh developer that was looking to do that. And so this current uh developer has kind of picked up from where they left off and and came came forward with this uh three structure concept, but everything else is generally kind of what we saw that last time it came with with a previous developer.
Thank you for clarifying that. I was thinking that everyone was just doing the same thing out there over and over, so. I do have a question. Um, in your findings of fact, it talks about the required parking for warehouse versus the required parking for office. How do you determine the numbers? Because it says that they have more than enough parking, but how do you determine the numbers when no specific percentages are shown of how much is going to be office and how much is going to be warehouse? So how do we assign square footage to something that is generically overlapping right now?
Yeah, so the numbers are in the code as far as what the requirements are, as far as what they're allocating. You know, how much is going to be office, how much is warehouse? Again, with the concept plan, um, we had them give us a general idea and it is in the concept plan. I don't know if I have, I think it might have been ten percent uh office space. Um, were the numbers that they showed, but essentially when it gets to project plan, um, we would take a closer look at those percentages. Right now, they don't necessarily know who's going to fill these spaces, so they can't
Okay, because that's what I was worried about. It's it's a concept plan, but right now it could be a hundred percent office and then they'd be underparked, so.
Yeah, and then at that case, we want to be able to prove it if, you know, so they're going to be limited to however much office, if that's what they're looking based off of how much parking they can provide.
So it's mostly just to make sure they've taken that into account and then you'll make sure, we will make sure at project plan approval?
Yeah, at project plan approval, they'll have to to bring forward. Um, you know, if they, if they're requesting something different, if they maybe have a tenant mind that needs more or less of a certain thing that they would uh allocate that. But yeah, at the end of the day, the parking that they can provide is going to limit how much uh of a specific use they're able to do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, did you have something else?
Yeah, that just, that sounds like the 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 office use would be it's incidental to the warehouse, or like warehouse is the primary use and then officers.
Yeah, it's going to be the the lesser uh most likely, but uh the zone allows for other uses too. So if they get a tenant that that is in that permitted list of of uh uses in the zone and they can park it and everything, then then that would be fine as well.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners, for staff? All right, can we have the applicant? And are you, Ms. Deller?
I am.
All right, I'll let you restate that again for redundancy and tell us how you're affiliated with the project.
Lindy Deller with Panatoni Development Company. We are in escrow to purchase this property from the current owners. Um, so we, along with the current owners, are the applicant. Um, and yeah, I'm the development manager with Panatoni. Uh, and I will oversee the development from entitlements all the way to a finished industrial product.
Okay, what do you want to tell us about your project or in answer to any of the issues the commissioners have raised?
Um, I think Dustin did a great job. Thanks, Dustin, and thank you all for uh hearing us today. The um, for Commissioner Knutson, the anticipated trucks, we are currently working on a traffic study, which will probably be presented at the site plan approval level. Um, so it, we are analyzing the market depending on the percentage of what we anticipate for certain types of uses in the, in this project will depend on the, or will directly impact what we anticipate for trucks.
All right, anything else you want to tell us unprompted?
Um.
It's okay if you don't. I was going to start pounding you with questions afterward. Okay, commissioners, do we have any questions for Ms. Deller? Okay.
All right.
Looks like you can sit down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any neighborhood chairs here for this item? Okay, any neighbors, any other citizens that would like to speak on this item? Okay, we will close the public hearing portion of this meeting and discuss amongst ourselves again. Um. Mr. Wright, do we need to talk about landscaping or building design materials or height or any of those standards at this stage? Or do we wait till project plan approval to address that?
Yeah, I think conceptually, we've kind of seen, you know, you've got, we've got the site plan. We've looked at uh landscaping as far as uh um, the requirements there. I think we're, we're pretty much there. Um, but yeah, project plan is when we'll get there. So it'll go to design review committee before it comes back to the planning commission. Uh, so they take a look at the architecture, design of the property and materials, everything like that. And then you guys would see this again at that point.
Okay. It seems like when we talked about um a development in the airport zone recently, we talked about not having parking on the street, or did I just imagine that? Is there, is it okay for there to be a row of parking between Center Street and the warehouse? Or do we need all the parking to be on the backside? That's not a design standard for the zone, is it?
Yeah, the the parking is is fine as they've shown it here. It, uh, you know, they've got their front yard setback and and the parking is all um, good there, so.
Okay. Um, can you tell us what the crosshatched section is behind warehouse number one? It's like a grid. Is that like a backup space for delivery vehicles? Maybe I should ask Ms. Star.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the truck courts.
Okay, yeah, awesome. Thank you. Commissioners, how do we feel about this concept plan? How do we feel about the zone change? Which one do you want to talk about first? Mr. Knutson has a thought.
Well, I live in that neighborhood, so I know we hate to see it happen, but we know it's going to happen. And that's what the uh zone around the airport is specifically for. Just so that these kind of kind of amenities can be part of the of the airport. Hate to lose the agriculture, but on the other hand, we also need to support the airport. And it seems like it will bring jobs into, the only thing, concern I have is I live right on Center Street.
The traffic.
And so the traffic, hate to see lots of big trucks going up and down Center Street. We've built these other roads that are going to filter supposedly help filter away from the traffic from Center Street. We only can hope that they do.
I'm hopeful that that new intersection that hasn't been activated yet, uh, that connects Lakeview Parkway with Center Street. I, it feels like it's been built really well with this sort of capacity in mind, wide turning radius and good, good structure, so. I agree with you. Every time I drive down Lakeview Parkway, I just cherish the south side of the road because I know it can't go anywhere. But we've talked about rezoning requests before and you can't force somebody to keep a green area just because you like it. If there, if it's not currently being used for that purpose, it's, it's their prerogative, so. Okay, any other comments, commissioners, discussion? Got to get ourselves to a place where we can make two motions here. So do we need to clear anything up or discuss anything before we can have a motion on these? Do we want um there to be a condition that that road on the east side be finished? That that collaboration with property owners um take place before something can be approved? Or is that just something to note, maybe to have in a development agreement or like, I don't know what our parameters of allowing that are? That was the one, the one thing we talked about that is iffy. I I really doubt that a large truck could get out of that center access. That's the reason I raised that, that right of way on the east side. Any thoughts on that? Mr. South.
Would that normally happen in the development agreement? I mean, is that something you've already talked about, Dustin?
Um, as far as that access goes and the timing, uh, David might know better on that, but like he mentioned, there's um, in the development agreement, there's uh, there's language about uh, street dedication, um, you know, constructing and up- upsizing utilities, uh, things of of that nature. Like they mentioned, we don't know uh the traffic studies and things like that yet. And so those things will will take place. Uh, and we feel that there's some assuredly in the development agreement.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
But just one thing to think about, what's before you is a zone change. Right? And so the the site plan is just given to provide some context for what could potentially be built in that zone. It's not meant to be prescriptive of what's going to be built or to solve all the problems that you're necessarily talking about or concerned about. Uh, once, uh, what happens is um, an investor that wants to pursue a project is hesitant to do that until they know that they're going to get the zone change, right? So they're speculating right now. Um, and so they give you kind of a hypothetical what could be built if you're willing to go along with them and do a zone change. If you do that, then they're going to make heavy investments to do an actual project plan. You know, and put all the details in there that you don't have right now to resolve those, all those questions. So at that point, Public Works is going to get intimately involved in the details about turn radiuses, width, width of road, all those kinds of things that we just don't really have right now and and probably you don't. all those kinds of things that we just don't really have right now and probably you don't need right now because you're just kind of high level of kind of making sure that you're comfortable with this type of a zone in this kind of an environment and this type of project hypothetically on a high level, if that makes sense.
That development agreement would happen at this level, right? It would, we wouldn't wait till project plan to to write up a development agreement. It would happen at concept plan approval.
Saying that, you could say then in the development agreement, specific things that you're concerned about, that you want, that you want to have addressed.
That's why I was asking.
But yeah, I, but I guess it might be difficult for them to commit to specific things like road widths and things like that when they don't exactly know yet what they're going to build, right? I mean, they don't know who the tenant's going to be. So this is a concept, right? They may, once this is done, they may go through through and finalize an agreement with some company and build a building to that standard or whatever. And so some of this will become more specific once they know those things.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners. What do you want to do next? Ms. Kendall.
Well, let's make a motion.
Okay, let's hear it.
Okay, so let's see, four and five. So I move that we approve three, for three industrial buildings in a proposed airport industrial located at 3701 West Center Street. And also.
Let's just do number four first.
Okay.
Okay, and just as a clarification, that is approving the concept plan for the three industrial buildings. Okay. Any discussion, any, what, we need to second? Mr. Knutson has seconded it. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Okay. Seeing none. Mr. Gonzalez has discussion on the motion.
Yeah, just to add an amendment on the motion.
Oh, we need to have their conditions.
That it's subject to remaining Public Works issues being reviewed and resolved and incorporated as part of the development agreement.
And I just noticed there's the two things here. Number one and two here. These have to be our conditions. Probably you want to read those?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the development agreement is approved and recorded. And there's council approval of the zone change to airport industrial zone.
Okay, so we need to modify that motion to approve the concept plan, but also the the conditions are that the development agreement is approved and recorded and that council approved the zone change to the airport industrial zone. Ms. Kendall, are you okay with that? And Mr. Knutson? Okay, we, any discussion on that motion now as it stands? Okay, item number four, we will start with Ms. Rollin.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. South?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Knutson?
Aye.
Ms. Kendall?
Aye.
And I will also vote aye. We have six to zero, a motion to approve the concept plan for item number four. Okay. Number five. Any more discussion required? I I would say on discussion for number five, it matches the general plan. It matches the southwest area plan. It fits in with the area. The traffic issues will be addressed with the traffic study and and a project plan. So I think it's exactly what we've been building up to. If, is there anyone else who has feelings they'd like to share about that? Or emotion they'd like to make?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Knutson?
That we send a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number five. Lyndy Deller requests a zone change from A1.10 to Airport Industrial A1 for approximately 33 acres located at 3701 West Center Street, Provo Bay neighborhood.
Excellent. We have a motion to forward a positive recommendation to the council by Mr. Knutson. Do we have a second?
We'll second it.
Ms. Rollin has seconded it. Any discussion on the motion as stated? Okay, seeing none. We'll start with Ms. Rollin for a vote.
Aye.
Mr. South?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Knutson?
Aye.
Ms. Kendall?
Aye.
And I will also vote aye. So we have forwarded a positive recommendation to the council for item number five. Okay, item number six. Before I read this one in, Mr. Wright, there are two different addresses listed here. I think the one underneath item six is correct and the one in the staff recommendation on the bottom right corner is wrong. Can you verify that? It's like it got cut and pasted from some other project. Okay.
Correct.
I will read it in with the one up top. Item number six is an legislative item, which means we will be forwarding a recommendation to the city council. Andy Jones requests a zone map amendment from the A11 agricultural zone to the R181 family residential zone in order to build a single family residence located approximately at 1595 West 600 South in the Sunset neighborhood. Mr. Wright, we'll let you present this.
All right, thank you. So yes, here's the property 1595 West 600 South. It's currently a an existing parcel of land. It's not a a building lot as it was illegally divided off from a a larger parcel of land. It is located currently in an agricultural A1.1 zone. So the applicant is trying to remedy this. They purchased the property and and found out later that they're not able to build on it in its current state. And so they're requesting this this zone change to a residential zone, the R18 zone, so that they can accommodate a single family building lot. The general plan in the area here calls for residential. So changing it from agricultural to residential would be bringing it into compliance with our general plan map. There is in the general plan, three units per acre, gross acre density limit on property and because of the size of this property, it could essentially, under this zone, be divided into two lots, but if that were done, that would exceed that three, three dwelling units per gross acre. And so the applicant to remedy this has expressed a willingness to do a development agreement, which would essentially would be them saying that they will limit the the property to one building lot, even though it's large enough to become two. And so that would satisfy staff's concern of of that potentially being two lots and exceeding the the general plan map allocation for density in this area. So the recommendation would include that development agreement, which essentially would again be the city council, would be the one approving a development agreement with a rezone. But the general plan encourages single family in this area. And so this would be helping further the general plans, goals and policies and would be bringing this property into compliance. And so with that development agreement to limit the density, staff fills like this would be a good request to forward a positive recommendation onto the city council with the conditions that that development agreement limit the site to only one building lot and that they record a final plat that gets approved by the city for one building lot. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this one.
Mr. Knutson, do you have a question for Mr. Wright?
Yes, all of the neighbors in that area are under the the thought that that 1600 West will be widened due to the building of the Dick, New Dixon Junior High School, which is further to the south several blocks. Is that something that's happening in the future and will that in any way interfere with the building of these homes on that property, or the home on that property?
Yeah, I'd like to see if David Day from Public Works could help answer that since it's related to the roads there.
Yes, so both six south and 1600 west are collector roads. And they will be widened as they're developed to the collector width. 1600 west going south there, the asphalt width's 48 feet wide. Whereas compare that to like a local road is probably 10 feet narrower than that. So it will be wider, but it's designed to handle higher volume traffic.
Do you currently have the the sufficient right of way on the 1600 west?
No. Like with most roads in Provo, we get that as people develop along the road and the road gets built by development. Compare that to like Lakeview Parkway where we went and acquired all the property and built everything with with a city project. Most of our interior roads are built with development.
So where would that happen in this process? Would this, once the subdivision was recorded, then you, the right of way would be given?
Yeah, so on this plan, you'll see that hatched area is additional right of way that they'll be dedicating to Provo City. And they'll also be putting curb gutter and sidewalk around their frontages and paving asphalt out to the existing asphalt.
So that the applicant is aware of that and willing is what you're saying.
Yeah, and that's just normal development as as anyone subdivides, they built the roads that are around them. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Day before we let him go back to his comfortable chair?
Not so comfortable, but yeah.
It's better than standing here at the microphone. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Wright? Okay, is the applicant here? There's one more person in the room that doesn't get paid by the city, so. Are you Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
All right. State your name again for us and tell us how you're related to the project.
Andy Jones, my name, related to the project. I'm representing the property owner, Ethan Garofalo. He is purchasing the, oh, he already purchased the lot in hopes to build his home there. And like was already stated, was surprised to know that he couldn't build yet. So the whole purpose of all this is to develop a building lot for him to build his house. The reason that I'm representing him is because we are building his house for him. And we also are building those four houses just to the south. ISAM Estates Plat A. This project is named ISAM Estates Plat B simply because we already have the name, so.
So we saw you a few months ago with those other four, right? Okay.
So yeah, that's that's the overview. So nothing, nothing too crazy, pretty straightforward. Does it have any questions?
Mr. Gonzalez?
That's just the lot to the immediately south, right?
Yeah, there's, there was 1.1 acres just the immediate south that was subdivided into four lots. Right before, right before density was reduced, thank goodness. That is already, Plat A is already zoned and recorded.
So Mr. Knutson, on page six, I think the area that's immediately south is the one that we we just rezoned, recommended for rezoning a few months ago. And the interesting thing about that is that I think I made a stink about patchwork rezoning because it left as kind of a circumference of agriculture around it. So this completes the puzzle, makes me happy. Awesome. I have a curiosity question. How does one buy property without knowing that it hasn't actually been subdivided? Just out of curiosity. I mean, did he just pay cash for something and?
So he, he went with the wrong realtor is what happened. His realtor didn't explain to him that it was not ready to be built on. So he bought it with the the assumption that it was ready to be built on when that wasn't disclosed via the transaction.
I just sort of assumed that in a closing, something like that would be caught, but.
Yeah, I would too, but he he purchased it before he knew before he knew that and he wasn't informed by his people he was working with or buying from.
Well, I think that a house across the street from an elementary school surrounded by other houses in an adjacent to an R1 zone, like I feel like this is exactly what the general plan and the southwest area plan is is working towards. So thank you, Mr. Jones. I I should say, are there any questions, other questions for Mr. Jones? Okay, thank you. I am going to make a huge assumption that there are neither neighborhood chairs nor neighbors present to speak to this.
We did have a neighborhood meeting.
Do you want to tell us about that, please? In lieu of other bodies here?
Yeah, so we had a neighborhood meeting and as is kind of witnessed here, no one cares what's going on. So everything was good.
Did they come to, did anyone come to a meeting?
Came to the meeting. It was me and Brian at the meeting. We had a little what? So no donuts. In spirit, there were donuts. I was eating during the meeting, but no one showed up, no one cares. So I, Brian is all good with it because it's, it's just one home. Getting me added to the neighborhood, so.
Okay, and who's Brian?
The neighborhood chair, Brian Taylor, I believe is name. I could be getting that wrong. I could be getting that name confused, but.
Thank you. Awesome. I appreciate that you reported on that and that you tried to include them. I would imagine because it makes logical sense for there to be a house here that that's why nobody came. But thank you. Any, we don't, we can close our hearing, our public hearing. Let's talk, planning commissioners. Any comments on this? Any concerns? Any clarifications? It's so exciting when planning works so smoothly like this. Like, I mean, unfortunately for the property owner, there have been a few hiccups, but everything's, the the plan is making it very logical which direction to go and that I like the the development agreement to limit the density. That's, that was a smart catch as well. Okay.
I, yeah, I hate to call Mr. Jones back up, but maybe, could you just, could you say what, where you are, where you are at in terms of the development agreement? Have you, are there any hiccups?
Dustin and I spoke about it and that's the the extent of what's happened. I assume it's going to be pretty simple. Agreement says we will not subdivide and we say, okay, and sign it. I, I can't imagine it's going to be more complex than that.
And so if another sale of this property happens without somebody catching it, they come in for a building from it and it gets caught then? That's the next hook?
Yeah, so the development agreement would get recorded on this property and so it would be there specifically stating what that limitation is. And it would be binding for future property owners that purchase the property.
And I imagine if, since it is going to be recorded with this plat that's going to happen, that if another purchase happens, it'll show up on a title report as an existing you know, just basically an asterisk to the
Perfect.
the property.
Excellent. Okay, commissioners, any more questions? Any more items for discussion that you would like to talk about this? Okay, I'm going to wait patiently for a motion then.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Gonzalez has a motion.
Uh, yeah, I move that we recommend on item number six, Andy Jones requests a zone map amendment from the A1 agricultural zone to R1.8 zone in order to build a single family residence located approximately 1595 West 600 South Sunset Neighborhood. Recommend approval to the municipal council with the following conditions. One, that a development agreement limits the parcel to one single family lot and not to be subdivided into any additional lots and that development agreement be recorded. And that a legal law is established by obtaining final subdivision plat approval by CRC and recorded.
Okay, we have a motion to forward a positive recommendation to the city council by Mr. Gonzalez. Do we have a second? Mr. Knutson has jumped in front of Ms. Kendall with a second. I feel like I'm advert, I'm announcing a horse race. That's pretty exciting. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we will start with Ms. Wallen.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. South?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Knutson?
Aye.
Ms. Kendall?
Aye.
And I will also vote aye. We have approved unanimously to forward a positive recommendation to the city council for item number six. All right, now is the time that you've all been waiting for where one of you gets to make a motion to adjourn. Mr. Knutson has made the motion and approved it, so we're not even going to vote on it apparently. Do we have a second on the motion?
Aye.
Ms. Kendall, who's seconding it, and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.